Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, February 12th. It is 7:10 PM. This is a meeting of the Town Council. Please rise to part of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The following Town Council members are present in chambers. Jan Spersico, Jason Mauer, Enid Lapellis, Jonathan Formicella, Donna Lynn Wales, Vin Duvva. The following Town Council member is remote, Kevin Reed. The following Town Council members are absent, Sean O'Rourke, and Kathy Coe. All right, consent calendar. I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented if there's no objection. Hearing no objection, passing consent calendar as presented. ISAT communication items A through Q being incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Item five, public participation. I will begin with those who are in the, who are in Town Council chambers at this time. If I am a member of the public that would like to participate, please come down to the microphone, name and address for the record, please. Please come down.
Good evening. My name is Joel Leniker. I reside at 70, 20 Town Road in Monroe. I just have a couple of questions. I know I won't get an answer, but I'm going to put that, I would like the questions to be included closer. Would like to be included in the record. Number one, has the Town Council, or will the Town Council be considering opening the Charter this year? It's been a very long time since the Charter's been opened. My understanding, the last time it was opened, there were numerous number of grammatical issues, some little, simple little issues. There was a question of whether or not the Town Clerk, the Tax Clerk, uh, Tax Clerk, I think, should, whether, whether they should be in elected position or in appointed position. I have some opinions on those, but that's, this is not the place for that. So I think it's time for the Charter to be opened. There are a number of issues that probably could be added to that. One is which, of which is how we run our planning commission in the sense that we really don't have, we have a planning and zoning commission, but that commission really focuses most of its time on zoning. Doesn't give them a lot of time to do much planning on a day-to-day basis. Yes, they follow the state statute requiring plan of conservation and development, but that's every, I forget, 10 years, 15 years, whatever. That's a long times in a community that's growing pretty quickly. The second issue is, I would urge the commission to consider a tax, some type of tax relief for senior citizens in the town. Maybe starting at 65 years of age. If those people have been here 30 years or more, they have certainly contributed to the community. I think we know that they tend to want to sit on a lot of boards and commissions. They oftentimes will donate their time as well. And that perhaps we would like to keep them in town to avoid maybe some of these expansive 99-house building projects that will probably be filled with a number of school-aged children. My last comment is only an observation, and this is for both, I'm going to be a little political at this point, for both Republicans and Democrats. People that sit on the dais representing different boards and commissions, I would urge them to talk to those commission people. And maybe logoed t-shirts are not really appropriate for them to hear applications. Hoodies, baseball, basketball shorts probably are not an appropriate apparel for conducting business on behalf of the Town of Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leniker. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate during public participation? This is the only opportunity this evening to participate, likely. So if someone would like to participate, they should do so now. Okay. Is there any member of the public online that would like to participate during our meeting? Please remember, mute yourself. If you're on your phone, it's star six to unmute yourself. Otherwise, if you're here on your iPhone, or tablet, or a computer, you select the microphone with the red line tool to unmute yourself. Given the members I see on there, I don't believe anyone will participate. Okay. One last call for those in Town Council chambers. All right. Thank you. Name and address for the record, please, at the microphone.
358 Leover, Lower Apartment 8, Fairway Acres. I know you guys are aware of the situation, I think, at Monroe Housing Authority. It ain't very good over there. Nothing has been accomplished this year on the, for the windows and stuff, and I did see it was in the paper. That was approved, but to my knowledge, that has not been approved. And the Chair, Joseline Brown Hudson-Brown, is in control of the money. And things that should be done aren't being done. And there was a meeting, what was that meeting, Marge, you know, too? The director went there, the manager went to that meeting of the state for, to advance, you know, education and learning about HUD, which Joseline doesn't know nothing. She met this, these people from Urban Concepts, which their agenda is nothing to do or not licensed as far as being a property management company. You have to have a broker's license. And she hired these people. And all the paperwork from the former director, Bonnie Snyder, there was a 22 audit, which I know about all that because I know about HUD. Had a waiting list from, for years because she never closed it. That list has been tampered with. She had the key. There was notes. She did tamper with it. Because if you, she had that list open all the time, so there had to have been lists on it. But if you go back to that 22 audit, which I haven't seen, but I'm aware of it, there would be a waiting list on it. So there'd be a waiting list, not to show what, but there needs to be an audit there. She's in charge there. Vinnie has left. And she's doing whatever the heck she wants, and that's not correct. The way everything's set up, the selecting picks who's going to be on the board. The last election was not qualified for that. He put her on the board. She's been nothing but trouble on the board. All I know is we didn't have expenses. Now we have 5,000, 6,000 in excess because of tape work and stuff not done, which there's no reason for that, that we incurred in expense because of her negligence. The last board meeting, I was there, the attorney was there. And I said some things and told her out about her life, which normally you wouldn't have to say at a board meeting. But she insisted the state check and this Urban Concepts of leaving the end of the month was qualified, and they're not. She had to say she lied because I have documents at home and I have proof. And I know Vinnie had got some package of it. They're a, they're from hand and wrong, on the quality, look her up. Her agenda is not good. So I believe Joseline should be relieved of her duties and somebody else should be put in. Because all the stuff she's doing and a lot of other residents would agree. And she's been prying on the residents, they'll leave there, and I don't think that's correct at all. Something's got to be done with her. And there's a meeting tomorrow, and I will be in that, but if she blasts out at me, it's not going to be pretty either, so. And she's, I'm just fed up with her. The other director, I never had to go to any meeting. Bonnie Snyder was there for 24 years. She ended up resigning, retiring because of Joseline. And we were left without any representation to manage the property. She, like I said, she took that key, Bonnie Snyder, left notes there for the next director. As a result, we had one apartment that, to me, that was negligence, got flooded because she didn't read the notes where we told her, the resident told her, it's supposed to be heat on. And because of plume is in the ceiling, it's also supposed to run the water. She ended up having to claim to, that was negligence on her part as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, I mean, I don't see why she should stay in power there and be in control because her agenda is, I mean, Marge knows, there was, what was there, 12 things, Marge, I don't know what it was? You said at the board meeting? Not one was done. What is her job there? What is she doing for us? I don't see. I don't see that. So that's a problem, so I want to make you aware of it. It's been an ongoing problem for a long time there, and I think she needs, you cannot stay till October. I'm not going to accept that. She needs to be out of it. She created her mess over there. Like I said, now there's a $6,000, almost $6,000 a month expense because of her. She said she hired these people originally because of an account. They're not qualified for that either. I mean, I, now I'm talking, talking to the Attorney General because now they put up Urban Concepts, put a website up that they're property managers. Again, they are not. So I'm going to have the Attorney General deal with them. And, and I just, you know, just wanted you to be aware of the situation over there. And I, and I don't think it's fair to the seniors because the turnover there, I could place next to me for, four years has been empty. And housing is very rare for seniors. That's supposed to be turned over in a reasonable time, which is a couple of weeks, a month tops. And they've been sitting there four years under her watch. How is that acceptable? There's, there's only 30 units and this, this, here's this, four, five, six years, you know, for, for seniors. And the police are sitting there empty. She don't care. She goes home, whatever. And I question if she's really a Monroe resident, because I looked up under property, her car should show up as property and it's not. So I'd like to see where her car is really registered, because if she is, and she's on the board, then she's not a member of the Town of Monroe. She's definitely not a taxpayer. I hear she's living on her mother's house, so she should never have been on the board if this is the case. I mean, I wrote a lot of letters and stuff back and forth, but it's not, it's not correct what's going on in the Town of Monroe, to the seniors, so. I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you. Just a couple, just a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
No, no.
Number one, is there a current property manager? It's this company, correct?
Yeah, there's one there now, Heather. But they're supposed to be hiring new companies, so I don't know. She's worked very hard. But Joseline's micromanaging, so like I said, she wanted to also to go to classes, and she told her not to do that, and that's the whole purpose of the seminar that she went to. And, and then there was this paperwork, Heather told me specifically, that she put up all the paperwork done, and she had the checks account statements, and she refused to give them to her. So there's a lot of things here that she's caused expenses and stuff, and I don't know what her agenda is, but it, but it ain't for the benefits of the residents over here at Fairway Acres, I'll tell you that.
And you also mentioned a date in October. What did you mean by that? That you, you can't wait till October?
Supposed to be done her term. I think it's September, October of this year.
Okay.
So I can't see her staying till then because I, I, I mean, she's in charge of the money, but I don't think she's been bonded. She took it over from Bonnie, who was there before. And we don't have a secretary, and we don't have a, what was it?
And that's for, that's, that's for the board though, right?
Right, right.
The housing, the Housing Authority Board.
She's the one writing the check, and always was the property manager to get the bills and whatnot. It's just, it's not correct, I was wondering, how it is. And she also, to go back, she terminated this guy a year ago, who was, the state had approved, who's had a disability. He was cleaning the bathrooms and all. She terminated him for the only one reason, because she feels because he lived there, he should be working there too. So, I mean, I think that's definitely discrimination, but the mother didn't want to do anything about it, but, you know, I, I just think her agenda and her purpose is not for Fairway Acres.
And the last thing I had is, have there been members of the Fairway Acres community reaching out to, you mentioned the Attorney General's office.
That's me. I've done a lot.
As well as any other administrative agency of the state of Connecticut that would have interview over the Housing Authority.
Did contact the state housing, but the one guy said something was, yeah, that it's for licensing at, what's that other one? The Consumer Protection, I think it is? No, I don't know if it's that one. But anyhow, he was wrong because they don't have a license, so I don't know how they could ever say that. You know, anybody can go and get an LSC, so that doesn't mean that they're qualified. When it's self-run, it's different, but when you're outside a management company, you need a broker's license. And I haven't seen these people that have been, because I think since November, they haven't done one thing.
Has, have you, has anyone that you're aware of filed a complaint with any state agency?
Well, I wrote to the state, I wrote to the lady in charge, the woman in charge of HUD in for Connecticut. She's aware, the second one is aware, but she passes it down to him. Then this other one, Ramsey, he's supposed to be in charge of that. He doesn't return anything from, he, he was supposed to come down for a meeting, didn't come down in December, the meeting was canceled, so. He's just high. He's not doing his job.
And where, in what agency is it part of?
He's part of the State of Connecticut, up in Hartford.
Right.
Okay, the property is owned by the Town of Monroe, but we're.
No, 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 I, I, I understand that. I just, I just.
I called the state there for them, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay. So, okay. Just want to make sure. Have you contacted State Representative Scott and discussed this matter with him?
In his office, and I got the response that they can't get involved in legal matters.
Well, well, they can't give legal advice, but you, you said that, that there was a representative from the state of Connecticut that did not respond. He's, the person said that they were going to come down. What's the person's name?
Well, his name is Ramsey.
Right, the last name?
I, I, I don't know. I think that's his last.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Ramsey.
Okay. What, what I would recommend, just on that limited issue, is to get that information and forward it to State Representative Scott and see if he can get additional attention from the state authorities on that for responding to those things.
I have to say, Jason Mauer, I talked to him. He did recommend that too, to talk to them. But when I did talk to the office, I wasn't impressed at all with the way she said that I had to look up the textbook. That's what she was saying. But I would try and get it to him directly.
Right. Because that would be the best way forward on, on that limited issue. There, there are obviously other issues at play, but, um, well, thank you very much.
Okay.
And I will just reiterate our request to both parties that we have to continue to look for interested applicants for the Housing Authority. My understanding is that there, there are two open spots on, on the committee. But to look for other interested.
I think there's actually three, right?
It's two.
There's supposed to be.
That was my, if it's two or three, we can confirm that, but there are multiple spots.
Open the whole time, so, I don't know. But anyhow, that's what you do. And I think that you guys have the attorney, the selectman has the attorney at our disposal. As he came to the last board meeting, and he, he pointed out a lot of things he was doing wrong, conducting the board meeting.
And so Attorney Lido was, was helpful at the.
Extremely helpful, extremely.
That's what I wanted to add to that, Mr. Chairman, is that we know that the town attorney was involved in that. There was a meeting, I believe, last week. It was like a mid-after, last, it was a mid-afternoon meeting, not too long ago.
Yeah, I don't know about that meeting. That's not.
And.
Well, that's the board meeting in the afternoon.
Yeah, the, the meetings previously had been canceled when the town attorney had announced that he was going to be there. So I just wanted to put that on the record. We, we're very aware of the situation. We've been doing the best we can to give you the help you need. And we'll continue.
No, now we're getting somewhere, and you're participating, and that's what we need, you know? And I appreciate that, you know?
Welcome.
Thank you. Attorney seems like he knows a lot, so. I mean, if there was an issue with, you know, hiring somebody, you were being raped over the calls for thousands for bookwork. And he said it won't cost more. He can put it on if the board allows it, onto the town's contract, and he can do that. So that was a big help right there, so. So stuff like that, he's having a long, sheer breathe. Really crazy. This one, I'll just have to end it by saying, Joseline, she doesn't take, like Marge, Bucy, who's on the board, is tenant commissioner. She doesn't vote on all the issues, and that's incorrect too. She makes the decision, so that's a problem. Because everything, I believe everything's supposed to be voted on by the board, so. I mean, I think eventually the whole system needs to be revamped because it's not working yet. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that.
Councilmember Mauer.
I just ask that our selectman in town attorney keep the council apprised of the situation. And Attorney Lido, if you at any point feel there are actions that the council can take or one of our subcommittees can take to help with this matter as well, if you could let us know if there's, there's something based off of your attendance at these meetings, whether a representative from council, from a specific subcommittee should be in attendance as well, or anything like that.
How do you do so?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. One last call for public participation. Any member of the public? No one was interested before, so I'm going to close it. Thank you very much. All right. Finally, number six, we have appointments. Councilmember Mauer, Resolution 24-017.
I move Resolution Number 24-017 to be accepted, resolved, that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Benjamin Sabia, Democrat of 22, Hemlock Lane, to the Inland Wetlands Commission for a term ending February 24th, 2024, and for a full term commencing on February 25th, 2024, and ending on February 24th, 2028.
Thank you. There's a motion to adopt Resolution 24-017. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Enid Lapellis. Discussion, Councilmember Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Benjamin Sabia is a lifelong resident of Monroe. He has a strong sense of community and commitment to environmental stewardship and actively engages in volunteer work. He's been involved in various community initiatives in an effort to make a positive impact. Benjamin has a deep appreciation for the environment, particularly the intricate balance of natural ecosystems. Benjamin is eager to bring his environmental awareness to the community in an effort to ensure thoughtful decision-making and responsible management of Monroe's invaluable natural resources. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Flark Gingrich, and then would be for a full term afterwards.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to add, Mr. Chairman, that I did meet with Benjamin Sabia, and I put this forward gladly. He was full of energy and excited to be seated in the Inland Wetlands Commission. I think he'll be a, a good asset to that commission, so thank you for bringing him forward.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. All right, all those in favor, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor adopting Resolution 24-017, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven to zero. Item B, Resolution 24-018. Mr. Mauer.
I move that the following resolution be accepted and approved, resolved, that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Nina Gagnon, Democrat of 160 Pepper Street, to the Historic District Commission as an alternate with a term ending July 1st, 2028.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Lapellis. Mr. Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nina has been a resident of Monroe for 10 years. She has been involved in many community events, most notably as a board member of the Monroe Playground Foundation, was the building captain of the Wolfstand Playground, and volunteers at Stepney Elementary School and the farmer's market. Nina previously worked as a high school math teacher and is currently employed with the Monroe School District as a building substitute teacher at Stepney Elementary. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the death of Edward Coffin.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just, Mr. Chairman, I did meet with Nina Gagnon. I, I did forget to thank her for helping the Wolfstand. I guess her impact there was greatly appreciated, but seems to be a good candidate for Historic. We did have a quick conversation as to people that are moving into the neighborhood, so they understand the historic limitations. Sometimes people move in and start to put fences up and things of that nature. So we spoke about, you know, awareness to people that are moving into that area. I know Aaron McGoldrick does a great job, but I think sometimes things slip through the cracks, so that was a conversation we had. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor adopting Resolution 24-018, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven to zero. Item C, Resolution 24-019. Mr. Mauer.
I move that the following resolution be accepted and proved, resolved, that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Valerie Richter, an unaffiliated of 49 Nelson Brook Road, to the Economic Development Commission for a term ending January 31st, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Lapellis. Mr. Mauer.
Valerie and her family relocated to Monroe in May of 2023 from Arizona after diligently researching priorities and raising their family. These priorities included access to open spaces and opportunities to interact with nature along with the proximity to diverse historic cultural hubs, which prioritize education and learning throughout the Northeast. Valerie is an industrial water treatment engineer with a background in cell and molecular biology, and owns a photography business which focuses on events and creative portraiture. She hopes that her professional skills will help support Monroe so that it continues to grow. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation, resignation of Rick Smith. And I personally would like to add, in addition, that it's always nice to see unaffiliated voters being included within the appointments. We should have representation from all walks of Monroe, so that's always a nice thing to see.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I did meet with Valerie Richter. What was also impressive with her with economic development, obviously, they do some things in regards to marketing and events and things of that nature. So she had a very extensive background, energetic woman. I think she's going to do a great, great job there. And yes, I agree with you, Jason. You know, if somebody brings a specific set of skills to the table, they should be representing this town, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-019, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes seven to zero. All right, that's it for appointments this evening. Moving on to action items. Item A, Town Council on Finance, Education, Health, Safety Matters. Madam Vice Chair.
Why, we haven't had a meeting in a while.
Thank you. Town Council Command, Plan, Zone, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Councilmember Duvva.
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. I, I will, yeah, I, just once again, I will note for the record that Councilmember Mauer had made a request to our Parks and Recreation Director, Missy Orros, to provide Town Council with some research regarding municipal fees to non-residents in the surrounding area regarding the use of a reservation system specifically for the pickleball courts faced upon. The Town Attorney's letter of opinion provided in our packets this week. This is regarding the discussion of the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule, which was partially approved at our last Town Council meeting. The unresolved matter of the fees related to the pickleball courts. We would like additional information, which Missy Orros will provide us with through the first selectman. Additionally, Councilmember Mauer did have a question about expanding the use of the reservation system to items such as the basketball courts. That was considered by our Parks and Recreation Director. However, that is not appropriate at this time, as there was no need to see it at this time, but that she would continue to evaluate that. Yeah, all right. All right, item B, that was just completed. Finally, item C, Town Council on Legislative and Administrative Matters. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet tonight. We talked about six resolutions, starting with the Performing Artist Engagement Agreements, Fairfield County Mutual Police Assistant Compact Agreement, the State of Connecticut Supplemental Notice of Grant Award Agreement, the DEMHS, Hartford Healthcare Corporation Student Affiliation Agreement, State of Connecticut Fiscal Year 2024 Highway Safety Project Grant for Speed Enforcement. Some of these we, we see on a regular basis. Some, some are new. And then we also spoke about a tax abatement, which the three of us had reached consensus on as proposed, which, which I'm sure will be in front of council after I sign it at Town Hall. So all these reached consensus tonight, and we'll be seeing them at council at some point.
Thank you. All right. Item D, Strategic. Many, we have not met since our last Town Council meeting as we reviewed the capital projects for our initial review prior to our last Town Council meeting. What I did send in our agenda was that I did ask for every Town Council member to consider the various departments in Town Hall, the municipal departments, to determine what directors they would like to speak to for our budget workshops. So if anyone has any today, I would like to hear them. But I understand that there are two members of Town Council not here currently tonight. What I would ask is that if you can't think of anything tonight, or you wanted to add to them, please let me know through an email, and we will work on getting those departments scheduled, okay? So typically, the way it's done for those who, this will be the first budget cycle, we will meet one or two days depending on the number of department heads we have. cycle, we will meet one or two days, depending on the number of department heads we have. We'll meet based on their schedules as well as ours. Their meetings are in the evening after five o'clock. And it's our opportunity to ask questions of the departments and the budget presented by the First Selectmen. So, you know, if you're looking at public works and, you know, how much money we're spending on the road or anything like that, and you want to ask about that, more or less saying whatever it is, that would be the opportunity to ask those questions, okay? So for starters, I know that we would like to speak to public works. I would like to speak to the registrar voters for early voting, as well as there is a request for an increase in salary for our registrars themselves. Who else? Anybody got anyone off the top of their head? Mr. Mauer?
I may have more for you, but I know I definitely want to speak with Economic Development as well as Planning and Zoning.
Well, I'm pretty sure we're going to talk to the same person. So, that'll be easy to schedule those, too. Anything else, Jason?
Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Those are the ones I know off the top of my head. I need to get into it more in depth.
Yeah, I would just ask, prior to close the business on Wednesday, this Wednesday coming up.
On the only.
Oh, no, not, not, not two days from now.
Okay.
But next, next week. So I will give the date. The 21st.
That's no problem whatsoever.
The 21st. Everybody close the business Wednesday, the 21st. Does anyone else have any? Okay. So again, please email me the departments which you would like to speak to. I will forward that to the First Selectmen, and we will organize, depending on the number of them, either one or two nights, okay? Additionally, for the budget cycle, we will have to schedule a public hearing for the budget. That will take place after the First Selectman's presentation on the budget, when I expect it to be at our second meeting in February. So the public hearing will be held a day after that presentation. That same evening, I expect us to meet with the Board of Finance. We typically have an annual meeting of the minds early in the budget cycle to speak to them. So I will be in contact with the Office of the First Selectmen, as well as Mr. Manjos, to organize that meeting. And there will be another capital meeting for SPC. Mr. Mauer?
Just for clarification, the Board of Finance joint meeting will be the same night as the public hearing or the same night as the presentation?
It's the same night as the public hearing for the budget.
Okay.
That's what we did last. I thought it worked well. It made, made sense to me. All right. Okay, thank you. Mr. First Selectman, the EMS Building Committee?
Yeah, I have a, an update in my First Selectman update, so I'll.
We'll pause till then.
Bring that up when, First Selectman update.
Thank you. Item F, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee. They have not met since our last Town Council meeting. Item G, First Selectman's update. Mr. First Select.
Thank you, everybody. As, you know, most of you got your budget books tonight. I do plan on presenting on the 26th. That gives everybody some time to kind of look at it and figure out exactly what offices you'd like to meet with. So, that being said, you know, I'm kind of moving this First Selectman's update in a slightly different direction into an operations update, an emergency services update, a capital projects update, because some of these things seem to come up from time to time. So I just want to give the community and council updates on certain things. So as far as the operations update, some of you may have seen an article. I was driving down the road, and I saw a lot of excess litter, you know, on the streets. So I spoke to Bill Holzworth, not Bill Holzworth, Chris Nowacki, and Bill Phillips about removing it. They got out there right away and took care of it. So thank you to Chris Nowacki and Bill Phillips, Director and Assistant Director of Public Works, for attending to that immediately. Land use seems to be a very big topic. I can tell you that land use cannot stop applications, and it is getting to be very intense in there. So through several hours of meetings and discussions with Bill Holzworth, Director of Economic Community Development, as well as Kathleen Gallagher, she's our new Planning and Zoning Administrator, and Craig Hirsch, Director of Human Resources, there's intention to adjust some job descriptions that better suit growing application enforcement in the land use department. So just, that's my intention to see how we can streamline it and make it work better than it, than it is right now. I know we have previously changed some concepts, but the applications are really coming in pretty heavy. So we need to make some adjustments there. In the Emergency Services Update, upgraded fire protection rating, insurance services office incorporated, ISO, the leading supplier of data and analytics for United States property casualty industry, recently upgraded the town of Monroe's public protection classification. Based on the independent assessment of Stepney Monroe and Stevenson Volunteer Fire Departments, Monroe's Emergency Dispatcher, Aquarion's Fire Hydrant Water Supply System, and the Monroe's Fire Marshals Risk Reduction Programs, ISO assigned the town of Monroe a PPC rating of four. Previously, the town of Monroe had been rated a five on a scale of one to 10, in which one is the best score achievable. According to ISO's latest report, only 16% of over 38,000 communities across the country that were surveyed by ISO scored a better rating than the town of Monroe. So congratulations to the fire department and Chief Catalano for those achievements. You know, they do a fantastic job, and it's great to see them get recognition in this way. Capital Projects Update, like I said previously, the EMS Building Committee update, I had something here. So all the town's financial obligations have been satisfied with EMS building. Therefore, the EMS Building Committee can be dissolved at this time. I'd just like to thank all of those who were involved, including but not limited to Jacunski and Humes Architects, Brian Humes, Burlington Construction, Justin Giampolo, John Krasniewski, and Chris DiCarlo, EMS Personnel of late Don Smith, Craig Rosenberg, and Lisa Payne. Thank you to the committee members for your dedication to this project during unprecedented times. Thank you, the Building Committee members, Mike Vitello, Dominic Benicia, John Brenner, Dave Orr, Rob Wesson, and John Ostrazuski. Thank you also to JP Stradinsky for the acquisition of a $500,000 steep grant from the state to complete this project. And also thank you to former First Selectman Ken Kellogg for creating a workable environment for this to proceed efficiently and for taking an interest in this capital project. So very thankful. Thank, thank you to this council for allowing me to run that project, but I am happy to see its completion. Also, in St. Jude, St. Jude is progressing with the applications being prepared for the subdivision of the parcels. There's septic preparations that are being done, so we should start seeing some movement there. Also, Pepper Street, fencing has been installed. At this time, grasswork submitted reports which are being reviewed by BL companies prior to sending them to the State of Connecticut. So that's where we are with that. And then quickly, and a community update, actually, before I go to community update, I'd like to mention one thing that I, that I did not put on here. In a world of, you know, security, cybersecurity is a little bit of an important issue across the board. When you work in Town Hall, you realize how much people, how many people are trying to get in and try to do certain things. So when you look at the budget, you'll see that I did put a line item, item in for some assistance in the IT department. Paul is here. I don't know if you'd like to say a few words about that program real quick, if the council doesn't mind. I just, he's the professional in that area. So I'd just like him to say a few words.
Speech. [laughing] So what the First Selectman is referring to is a line item added to the budget, what's known as EDR, which is endpoint detection, excuse me, in recovery. This goes beyond normal antivirus. This does is it actually looks at the OR level of the computer, and it looks for, they call IOCs, indicators of compromise. A lot of organizations are rolling this out, both municipal, education, Fortune 500. It's kind of like a next level protection against cybersecurity. The nice thing about this is, is that we would partner with our federal partners at CISA, which is the Cyber, Cybersecurity Information Security Agency. And this program allows for active monitoring of our high-value assets to make sure that we're not getting breached.
Well, thank you.
I know I just said a lot of technical terms, but does anybody have any questions regarding?
So the only thing I would say is, because it's a new line item in our budget, we may have some questions during our budget workshop. So I, I would anticipate adding IT, because well, it does cover the Board of Education, as well as whatever municipal questions we have, we will probably have in the budget. I mean, if anybody has a present question tonight, they can ask it.
Well.
Yeah, go ahead.
The one, the one thing, it's not, not a question, it's actually a way of possibly trying to save you some time, or if it makes sense to, we have our budget presentation two weeks from now. Perhaps if you can get us some information, one about the programming you tend to use, and what it does, and some more details there, the costs associated with it, the cost that it's protecting against, what the potential things that it's protecting us against could cost us, things like that, some kind of analysis. Perhaps with just that information in paper, we wouldn't need to talk in person, and we could make that determination. But it might save your night of coming out if we feel like it's enough.
Yeah, absolutely. And I do, I have information. The one thing I would suggest, though, is that if, and I will gladly give you the information and pricing, it's just that we shouldn't make it public, only because this is a specific product, and we don't want to publicize exactly what product we're going to use.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Well, it has to be public in a certain regard, because the check's going to be cut from Town Hall to business. I would understand why you wouldn't want to put it in a presentation, things like, but, but the Freedom of Information Act would compel the production of the name of that business. But anyways, a larger view of what the service provides would, would, in cost, would, would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. James?
Question. So this is something we've not done before. It's brand new. We're implementing.
Correct.
Okay, it's not replacing an old system or anything?
Correct. This would be an addition to.
Okay.
And when I say an additional line item, I mean, it would fall under an existing line item. That's already in my budget, but it would be an additional.
Expense.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Mr. First Selectman?
Yeah, I mean, just in the, in the area of IT, you know, anything that's security-based at this level was concerned on how to deliver this. So I'm, I'm glad that Paul kind of cleared that up. And, you know, we understand FOI, things of that nature. I did have some very experienced, high-level IT, at least one individual from Department of Defense come in and just be a guest speaker. And I will say to report back is that our IT department is ahead of some federal agencies right now. So hats off to you, Mr. Corson.
Thank you.
You know, anything that, that we can do to make it easier for you, of course, I want to do that. Of course, of course. So, so yeah, this is a new program. And we're just hoping to stay a little bit ahead of the curve and protect our information, protect data that's out there that sometimes should be F-liable. It's, it's an initiative, and this is just one small step on that initiative. So, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Just quickly after that, just community updates. High Paws Ribbon Cutting, congratulations to the new owners Andrea Basagalupo and Chris Gonzalez. I had an opportunity to visit to great, this great new business located at 439 Monroe Turnpike, and wish them luck. This establishment was very clean with a modern environment and pleasant staff. I'm sure the community will support these great folks and these new businesses. So congratulations and welcome to High Paws. Just one other thing, the Girl Scout mural, they came to Town Hall, asked to put it up. We, our Girl Scouts mural is on display in the Town Hall lobby. We're very happy to have the mural and to support the Girl Scouts. The troop leader was appreciative and noted that by just putting the mural on display gave the Girl Scouts the recognition that their work can impact their community. And outside of all that, storm predictive for tomorrow. So everybody, please travel carefully. That concludes my.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Mr. Mauer?
One, just in addition to your last statement, just so anybody who needs to know, Monroe did officially call school for tomorrow.
Yes.
No school tomorrow. Happened while we were here. With respect to Ribbon Cuttings, Mr. Selectman, if there's any, when you do have advanced knowledge of them, if you could inform the council, I know some of us like to try to attend when we can. So if you could keep us informed ahead of time of any of the ribbon cutting, so we can attempt to be there to help support these businesses.
Seen yet many of them.
Yeah.
You know, with High Paws, I actually wasn't able to make the actual ribbon cutting, so I went there a few days earlier, just to visit them. So I wasn't actually physically at that one, but, but I implemented by spirit.
Yeah. So if you can keep us informed of those, that would be great. And then just, Mr. Chair, for the EMS Building Committee, do we need to take any formal action to?
Yes.
Dissolve this?
Yes. I just need confirmation that there's kind of like a punch list, kind of what we did with the police building committee in the fall. That one was closed a little late, but I don't believe the same issue is with us. But we're just going to dot our i's and cross our t's.
Dot i's, cross t's, and it will be on a future agenda.
Yes.
Beautiful.
Yes. Okay.
Sorry, Frank, you looked excited to talk there.
I think.
That would be my recommended course of action. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it for action items. We have no matters of unfinished business this evening. All right, can I have a motion to accept the filing donations that individually exceed $1,500, $3,000 to Project Warm from Santa Energy Corporation, and then a tax credit program? Is there a motion?
Moved.
I've been Duba. Is there a second? Second by Donald, Donald in Wales. Mr. First Selectman, any discussion?
Acceptance of the donations. Now, just thank you very much for the donations. We're talking about your business line A, correct?
That's correct. All right, well, again, I echo the First Selectman's thanks to Santa Energy Corporation for that very generous donation to Project Warm. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the donation, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none passes seven to zero. Item B, Resolution 24-020. Madam Vice Chair?
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 24-020, resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, and Keith White, Police Chief of the Town of Monroe, are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Fairfield County Mutual Police Assistance Compact Agreement and any associated documents by and between the Fairfield County Mutual Police Assistance Compact Agreement for the Mutual Police Assistance.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I do.
Second by Donald in Wales. Mr. First Selectman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Monroe Police Department has expressed a desire to join the Fairfield County Mutual Police Assistance Compact Agreement, whereas under Title 7-277A, Title 10A-156BF, and Title 7-130ACC, the Connecticut General Statutes authorize municipalities and institutions to enter into agreements for mutual police assistance. Under this agreement, there's a regional approach to law enforcement resulting in better coordination and less duplication of efforts. Under this agreement, there's a regional approach to law enforcement resulting in better coordination and less duplication of efforts. The agreement also protects the safety and well-being of the respective municipalities. This matter has been reviewed by the town attorney, who provided.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty-four dash zero two zero, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. Item C, Resolution twenty-four dash zero two one, Madam Vice Chair?
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution twenty-four dash zero two one. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreement and any associated documents binding between the State of Connecticut, D E M H S, all capital letters, for the Supplemental Notice of Grant Award Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. There's a motion to adopt Resolution.
Second.
Mask, yeah, twenty-four dash zero two one, is there a second?
Second.
It's an hour, second. Mr. First Selectman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As in prior years, the town has the opportunity to receive funding from the State of Connecticut through the Emergency Management Performance Grant Program. Attached for your reference is a supplemental notice of grant award for costs related to supporting all hazards, emergency management areas, which will provide funding in the amount of ten thousand dollars. This agreement has also been reviewed by our town attorney, who provided his letter of opinion.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I get excited when we're getting money.
Awesome.
Always getting money.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution, uh, twenty-four dash zero two one, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes seven two zero. Item D, Resolution twenty-four dash zero two two, Madam Vice Chair?
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution twenty-four dash zero two two. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe and the associated documents binding between Hartford Healthcare Corporation for the Student Affiliation Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donald in Wales. Mr. First Selectman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hartford Healthcare System is willing to provide our volunteer EMS students who are seeking their emergency medical technicians, E M T certification, clinical instruction, field work, learning experiences, and supervision in their facilities, emergency department. This matter has been reviewed by our town attorney, who also provided an opinion letter.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution, uh, twenty-four dash zero two two, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, passes seven two zero. Item E, Resolution twenty-four dash zero two three, Madam Vice Chair?
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution twenty-four dash zero two three. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the F Y two zero two four Highway Safety Project Grant Application, and any associated documents binding between the Connecticut Department of Transportation for the Speed Enforcement Program for mun- Municipal Police Department.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
By Jason Mallow, Mr. First Selectman?
Once again, we have the opportunity to apply for grant funding to support speed enforcement. Attached for review and consideration is the application for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Highway Safety Project Grant Application for the Speed Enforcement Program. The terms of the agreement are included in the application for this grant to provide additional funding to cover the cost of special patrols under this program. This application has been reviewed by our town attorney and has provided his letter of opinion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty-four dash zero two three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing no opposed, this passes seven two zero. Uh, there are no unfinished matters of unfinished business, there are no unfinished matters of new business. There is no second level particip- second public participation this evening. It is eight oh four P M. I am adjourning this meeting, and I will see everyone uh, two weeks from today. Please remember to email me the names of any departments you wish to hear from during our department meetings during this budget cycle. But before I adjourn the meeting, I am asking for, uh, the First Selectmen's Office in consultation with, uh, the Town Clerk's Office, who set a public hearing for, um, February twenty-sixth, uh, prior to our Town Council meeting. Thank you. We are adjourned.